This is the Board of Education Work Session. It is Monday, July 15, 2019. It is 6:40 PM. We are in the Nashville High School North Board Room. And we are here for a review of the Nashville School District Strategic Plan Draft. So, Mr. Guarino, would you like to take the role, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Oden.
Here.
Ms. Raymond.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman is joining us by telephone. Are you by yourself tonight, Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher.
Yeah, I'm here.
Mr. Mosher is also joining us by telephone. Are you by yourself, Mr. Mosher?
I sure am.
Ms. Van Twyver.
Present.
Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Hoensie.
Present.
Ms. Timmons.
Here.
Ms. Porter.
Here.
Also, we have Dr. Mosley.
Here.
And Ms. Yates. Thank you.
So, Dr. Mosley, did you want to do an introduction?
I certainly can.
Did you have something? Thank you.
All right. Well, first of all, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's enjoying the summer time with family and the warm weather. It's certainly been kind of a change. Usually, we try to sneak in here quickly because of the cold, but now it's nice and toasty outside. I would be remiss if I didn't have an opportunity to really thank some individuals who have really -- we've just happened to come together within the last month to really put this draft in front of you. So, if I miss anyone, please jump in. Susan Porter, thank you. Lisa Yates. Diane Vino. Linda Walsh. Stacy Hines. Anybody else I miss? Who else I miss?
Gabby and Tara.
Gabby and Tara. Who else? Did I get everyone? Did I get everyone? Okay. And so, part of what we have done is that after our last meeting, we, the collective, we, a group of us, actually really got together and run this latest iteration through what I call a series of filters. And what you see in front of you is a collection of effort that has gone on for not one or two hours, but many hours of work that the group I just mentioned were able to put together. I'd like to start by saying that just having a elementary school experience from Susan Porter and Diane Vino from the coaches' perspective, but also having Linda Walsh's perspective for the middle school, also having Lisa Yates' perspective from the high school, really allowed us to really, and from central office, my point of view, really allowed us to kind of massage this and really get into the nitty-gritty. All of the action steps and the information presented to you have been run through many filters and many hard work that the individuals I shared with you put in. So, I just want to, before I get started, just thank those individuals for their time. And what I mean by time, they come in, not even asking, they're actually volunteering, and it's just been a wonderful experience. Okay. So, there's a lot of information here in front of you, and I know that we can get caught in the weeds about different documents. I think what's important is that I'm going to just highlight about four or five of the documents, and then I think it's important that we open it up for discussion and clarification. One of the things that the document, based on some of the feedback we got, is that we started off with an executive summary of the strategic plan. Within that summary, there is a narrative, followed by highlights of the goals, the vision statement, the mission statement, and the belief and value statement. Those statements have been revised from the previous iteration of the strategic plan. And also, these statements were taken from the feedback we got from our focus groups and feedback from our surveys as well. So, this document right here. The most important thing, I think, is that when we talk about the strategic plan, I think it's important that we talk about what is it that the plan looks like? How will we know exactly what the plan is? And what is the process and the matrix of this plan? And if I can take a step back, is that when we started this journey, we recognized that we didn't want to get caught up in some traps. And what I mean by traps is that we could have easily crafted a strategic plan that was about 100 pages, and that would have captured everyone's concerns. But we really had to capture a plan and develop a plan that was concise, based on the feedback we got from our constituents and our stakeholders, and so that's what we did. So, the document you see right here, this document, is our five goals, and connected to those goals are what we call action steps, timeline, persons responsible, district resources, funding sources, and financial costs, and we call it the desirable or deliverables. And so, when you walk through this, it was deliberate that we generated five goals. And we wanted to keep those five goals because we wanted a strategic plan that people could understand and digest and also reference back. So, that's this document right here. The other thing to it is that we wanted to say, one of the things that we wanted to establish is, okay, you have this plan. What are the deliverables according to the year? How are you guys going to measure growth and accomplishments? So, one of the things that we drafted was, just for this next upcoming year, was an action, we called Nashville School District 2019-2024 Strategic Plan Action Step for Goals during the 2019 and 2020. In each of those, we have the action steps and the deliverables for that year. So, in other words, when, at the end of the year, this is the action or deliverables you're going to see for the action steps within the plan. And that's what we drafted for you tonight. I should also say that if this plan is approved, you'll get another document very similar the following year and the following year, so that you know the action steps that we're working on this year for the plan. The most important thing that I thought was very important and relevant for the board, and I just want to just make this very clear, is that this plan, the strategic plan, is organic. What I mean by is organic, it's alive. We want it to be alive. We want it to be part of our culture. But at the end of each year, each year, there's going to be a similar, what I call venue here, where as a board and as, you know, the administration, we would sit down and we would actually talk about the deliverables or the action steps that we'll accomplish each year. And so, that's why you see this here, this document, document that says Nashville School District 2019-2024 Strategic Plan Accountability Template. And that's our template that we designed, based on some of the feedback we got from this board and also from others around this, like, what will you see at the end of the year in terms of deliverables? The other thing that happened for the strategic plan, and this is something that we thought was quite interesting, the fiscal and school year breakdown of human capital and action steps. And as you can see, you'll see two, you'll see three columns together, FY '20 and then you'll see school year 2019-2020. One of the most interesting things when we went through this process is how we look at school years. And teachers look at the school year very differently than myself. And you're going to say, "What are you talking about, Dr. Mosher? What are you talking about?" When I, when we did this exercise, probably like 20 minutes, literally, when I say FY ' '20, for the teachers, they think it's next year. But I'm really saying school year 2019-2020. So, it was a hard kind of conversation to have. So, we actually broke it down for the teachers and the administrators, so there was no confusion in terms of what the expectations were. For, when I say FY '21, the teachers would know it's really 2020, 2021, and so on and so on. So, we thought that that was important for us to make that distinction between FY '20 and school thousand, and, sorry, FY '20 and school year 2019-2020. It's the same thing, but again, when you're going through this process, you want to make sure that you're talking about the same apples and oranges, so to speak. And finally, I thought what was important is that in this plan, there is certainly significant and well overdue human capital. And so, we actually put together this draft of what that feels and looks like over the next, and I say in quotations, five years. Some of the proposals within the plan, we recognize cannot be done in five years. So, that's why we extended those commitments beyond the five-year plan to make it palpable for our future budgets. So, as much as I would love to have it, as much as I think our constituents and our teachers would like to have a social worker in all of our schools, we're just not going to be able to hire 17 social workers to support our social-emotional programs in five years. That's just not plausible. But if we extend that over some time, I think that's something that's feasible. Finally, what you saw in the appendix was just some things that the board had already reviewed. For example, our strategic plan projected time was already something the board had information, already had that information. Our graphic on student success graphic, the board already had that. Also, our Nashville School District Strategic Plan, and we had kind of a, we mapped out our focus time in terms of our timeline, how we were going to do that. I think what is important is that when you embark on these endeavors, you always have very good intentions, but then you realize, okay, we needed this, okay, we do that. But I'm feeling, you know, very, very confident, based on what was presented here, that most, if not all, of the information here went through a series, what I've called, of lenses for us to really understand the needs of our district. We didn't just come and make up these action steps based on our feelings or what we thought. It really came from the data set, based on the focus groups and the survey from our community and our students and our parents and our stakeholders. So, there is quite a bit of information here. We're excited about the information. Sometimes, it's quite a lot to digest if you're not in the weeds, but we've been swimming in this weed pond for about two weeks, well, no, closer, more than that. And so, for me, you know, it's a kind of a bittersweet for some of this stuff to finally come to fruition. All right? I've talked too much. Turn it over.
Okay. Thank you. I guess what I would like to bring your attention to, just one sentence, if you look at, I can read it, at the executive summary in the conclusion on page three, I just want to kind of read this because we're working on the wordsmithing of this. But "The successful completion of each action step supports the district's five goals and in turn enable us to become the model district of excellence in public education." So, I guess what we're trying to see through that is a way to express that this is really an integrated plan. The vision, mission, and values are really infused in every part of it. We worked hard to be sure that the action steps, the goals and the action steps would move us forward in accomplishing the vision, mission, and values. The appendices, which people asked for, which I think was a great idea, we tried hard to make those appendices read for different audiences. So, this big document is something that I think that people who are in education are going to look at that and be able to understand. But we're trying hard to write for different audiences, and that's what we tried to accomplish through the appendices. So, if you look at Appendix 1, as Dr. Mosley said, this is for people who, it's always confusing, are you talking about calendar year, school year, or budget year? So, I think that you explained that. So, this one?
It says, top of the top, it's folded.
Oh, I see. No, that's all right. Thank you. So, if you look at fiscal year 2020, those are things that have already been passed in our budget, and so, the strategic plan is starting, but the budget has already been approved. But we're really proud of all of the things that are included in that budget that we've already voted on and the aldermen have approved. So, those things were in the budget, and so, somebody looking at this can look and see in 2019-2020, which is the school year we're coming up to. Even though the plan hasn't been approved yet, we do have things that people, teachers and parents and families can expect. And if you look at the action items over here, those numbers are tied directly to what those proposals were in the budget and what we're actually going to get. So, I hope you see that it's kind of infused together. So, for the years after that, you see that for fiscal year 2021, those are things that are proposed. Of course, we don't have that budget yet, it hasn't been approved. But if that budget were to be approved, then in the school year 2020-21, these are the things that people could expect to see, and you can reference the action items right beside that. So, we'll see that. I'm saying the same thing he said, but we're just so talking to this. So, then if you look at Appendix 3, which is the human capital cost, I know that there was some concern from board members, appropriately so, how much is this going to cost in each year? So, this is broken down by the goals and the people we hope, the positions we hope to hire, and approximately how much that would be, so people can look at that. I know that we had a request for narratives, which we tried to address in the executive summary and also in the action steps for goals. So, these are, we're still working on these, like, there's a lot, this is a lot of wordsmithing and going back, and part of what we've been doing is try to align each document to the others, which is very time-consuming but important. So, I know myself, when I got my packet and I read through the action step for goals during 2019-2020, in the executive summary, we still have to align some of that. So, if you find some, I guess there are errors or things that are misstated, we are going to work on that.
We finally, I'm sorry.
Let me just jump in real quick. If I can, Sue.
Sure.
Can I just jump in? Yeah, I think it's important that what we, this by far serves, this large document really serves as kind of like the master document. And once you touch this, we found this out the hard way, don't find it out until you finally figure it out, but once you touch this, you have to touch it, make all the edits, and then it has kind of a ripple effect throughout the entire plan. So, that's why you see some of those lineups. The other thing I think would happen, and I can't remember if it was coming from this feedback group or from another person that emailed us, but I think the, I think it came from our last work session, that the board requested that a list of all of these task forces and teams that would be active during the plan, and this was our draft on what we believe these task forces would be created and what I say look like. I think it's important to highlight that these task forces are in reaction to the faculty in the schools feeling like they work in silos, and in some ways, they want to come together and really start to work on the work that needs to be done, and the need for these task forces were there. So, that's kind of where that's, the genesis of that argument came from.
And there's one more appendix that we're working on, that we were not able to complete enough to pass out in this packet, but it's a document that shows all of the positions that we hope to add and how they tie into each action step and goal. And so, that's, when you say you're going to do that, and you're like, "I will do that." Well, it takes hours and hours, and so, we will have that forthcoming, so that, you know, we wanted to kind of cover in the appendices the big ideas that were in here in a different format. Correct? Yeah? Okay. So, I guess our, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Van Twyver.
Appendix 3 and just list the appendix numbers of the ones you're still working on.
The one that we, that one doesn't have a number. We haven't, the one for the positions?
Yes, it does.
Does it have a number?
Appendix 3.
Okay. No, no, that's the human capital cost. That one is this one, how much those positions would cost in a budget sense, but the other document that we're working on that's not here, did we, I don't think we gave it a name yet, but we were working on what the position is. Can you help me out, Ms. Yates? So, it's what the position is. So, say it were the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, we would say, what would be the impact of that position? What are specific things that we would expect that position to give to the district, and how does that position work in the totality of the whole plan to move us forward in accomplishing our goals?
So, we don't have that right now, and that's what you're working on?
We are. And I think that that will be really helpful when you're looking at the positions, like, why do we need that? What are we going to do with that position? What would that position look like?
Right. So, I do have a question on Appendix 3, if it's time for questions.
Sure.
These are, the costs here are shown by each goal. What Goal 1 is going to cost, Goal 2. Have you done any monetary projections on the total cost for each year? Like, you've got under Goal 1 in nothing in 2020.
Right.
And then, then the next one is 2021. So, all five goals will cost us how much in 2021? I mean, I'd like to see.
We can do that.
What future expenses are.
Okay. That's a good point.
Yeah.
Cost. So, you want the cost. Pardon me?
Even though I won't be here to approve the budget, I still would like to know what the.
Right. No, that's an important appendix. So, you want, so just so I'm understanding you, you want the cost of personnel?
The five goals.
By year.
By year.
Okay. By budget year.
But, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And I hope that people will notice just what I'm saying, that like, when we've had these meetings, I have pretty faithfully written down everything that people have said, and I hope that you see your suggestions in this latest version, because we have taken them quite seriously, and we have tried, you know, the best we can where they're applicable to add people's comments. So, it's been very helpful. Okay. Ms. Raymond.
Thank you. Just to piggyback off Ms. Van Twyver's point, for the cost per year, we're talking about only personnel that's being added to our existing staff, correct? We're not talking about people who maybe might be moved around or shifted. And I've not heard anything about people being moved around or shifted, but I just want to make sure that we're talking about costs above and beyond what our, like, standard operating cost would be, right?
Yes.
So, we're looking at adding faculty based on the needs of the district. I also, if you look, we have to be sensitive to that point, because when you're adding more people, it does have a budgetary increase in effect. So, if you notice on the fifth, on Goal 5, when we talk about fiscal responsibilities of the district, there are some things that we should just note that is going to have an impact on our district in terms of financing and human capital. And not to get into the weeds too much, but understand that we have, in August of 2021, the teacher contract expires. So, that is by far is the largest kind of like entity of cost that will have an effect. So, if you look at 5.3, allocate financial resources to align with national bargaining units that will ensure competitive salaries for the Nashville School District staff. So, over to, if you look to the far right, this, and this is based on a four-year contract, based on attrition, this isn't something I'm proposing or anything like that, it's just some, it's a placeholder. So, just, whoever's sitting in the room, just recognizing that the last teacher contract cost the district about maybe six, six to seven million dollars-ish over eight years. So, fast forward to two years down the road, it's probably going to be in the ballpark between seven and nine million dollars. So, even when that FY '21 or FY '22 comes along, we have been conscious not to make sure you don't add too much to, in terms of personnel, because that's going to take a large financial hit on the district when those contract, particularly the teacher contract, will be renewed. I don't know if I answered your question or not.
Yes, thank you. The other question I had as well, that Ms. Van Twyver triggered for me, was on this Goal 5, there's some placeholders, let's say Dan, and I'm hoping that before, before we meet again, that we'll have not Dan. So, just to call your attention to that.
Sure. We actually wanted to make sure that we're conscientious of the capital improvements in the district. And there is some information that we have and information that's still in the works, and I know that there's been some board members who are, who have been involved in the construction project, particularly around the middle school. What I can share with you, again, when this, when this kind of went out, we got some information back, and, you know, the number-one priority in terms of capital improvements will be the middle school projects. And that's going to tie up the district for, you know, quite some time before these other elementary schools come online.
Okay. Oh, sorry. And just to finish that thought about the capital improvements, we did get grants that aren't included in this for the work that's being done at the elementary schools this summer regarding safety and security.
Correct. So, that's another very valid point. That actually came about last week. We got it from the state. So, they pay 80%, we pay 20%. So, you know, to put that number down here would be premature, because we just don't know whether we're getting those grants or not. So, understand that there is some level of fluidity in terms of these capital improvements, but you are correct on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Sorry. Did you have your hand up, Ms. Hoensie? Are you wanting feedback on, like, grammar and that kind of wording?
Okay. Well, if you have wordsmithing, yeah, there are a lot, because I, myself, I went through it, and I have a lot of bread. We tried really hard to get it to a point that we could get out before the Fourth of July week, so that you would have a chance to look at it. I know for the, wasn't the last work session, we didn't get stuff out in time. So, even though it does have a lot of, it has a lot of editing that has to be done when we already have a meeting scheduled for that. So, I guess what we would, if you have those, I mean, if you wanted to hand them to me without going over, just in case we would miss it, I guess what we really want is like the meat of it, like, you know, the actual goals and the action steps. If we worded it in a way, like, we understand what we said, but if we worded in a way that's not clear, that would be helpful.
Yeah. Sometimes fresh eyes, and my dad was an English teacher, so I have.
No, absolutely. Yeah. So, I guess if you handed the editing things to me separately, but if you had something of, like, the way that the wording is that it's unclear, that would be something we could talk about here.
Okay. I'll just hand you my edits.
Okay. All right. Good. So, I'll get next to Ms. Hoensie.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate all the work that has gone into this. I don't think I've ever seen a strategic plan anything like this, so, thank you. I think what concerns me most is, you know, we do have a lot of human capital projections, and I think those are needed. What I'm disappointed not to see is any psychologists added to the budget, with students in, coming to us with great anxiety, coming with a ton of problems. And I would think that if the teacher contract is up in 2021, that might be something we want to look at when we're negotiating that contract. I know it's hard to get psychologists under our pay scale, but I think that needs to be addressed, because when you look at this, the school year 1920, 2020, add two psychology interns, never mentioned again through the entire plan. And I just feel strongly that from everything I've heard, we need some human capital in that area. And if it's a matter of not being able to afford them because of the teacher's contract, I think that needs to be addressed when you renegotiate the contract. And I think teachers probably understand the need for the psychologists more than most people at this table. That's my comment.
No, thank you, Dottie. We actually talked about that extensively, and we said, you know, how about we add, because I know that you expressed concern about that the last work session. And for those, just to kind of reiterate, for those who are not familiar with our situation when it comes to school psychologists, we still can't find school psychologists in the district. We have two openings, and we haven't been successful in finding those individuals. There is a financial cost to that. And so, we, that discussion about taking them out of the union and placing them somewhere else, we'd love to broach that subject. Part of what we talked and mulled about around this, Ms. Oden, is around the need for support for our kids and particularly around the social workers. And so, we talked about, how do we, the question was around support, students, behavior, discipline, someone to be able to serve as that buffer, and really discussed, it was a part of the survey, that teachers really want that level of support. And I know that we're starting to engage in that with the social-emotional pieces, but if there's something we do have control or something we can provide them with, we proposed and we looked at the possibility of bringing in those social workers for our most challenging kids. So, it's a valid point, Ms. Oden. I don't disagree with you. We'll certainly broach that subject along with other, I would say, not issues, but wants in terms of that teacher contract. issues, but wants in terms of that, that teacher contract, along with PD too, so.
Well, thank you. But I think it needs to be in here. The need is there, and it needs to be addressed. If, and as I said, I think maybe addressing it in two thousand twenty-one, but it, it's critical. Social workers are important, but they're not doing the ones, they're not the ones doing the testing for our kids, and, and that has a backlog. People are waiting on the results, so to me, that's critical.
Thank you.
So just as a follow-up, how would you exactly like to see this in here? How many positions would you like to see? Would you like to see them phased in over a period of time? What would that, to take your suggestion, what would you suggest that looks like in the plan?
Well, I'd love to see a psychologist at each school, so. But no, I'll, I'll leave it to the group at this point, but I, I think, I think there are some schools where there are more issues than others. But we, we absolutely need, I would say, at a minimum, four more.
Four more, okay.
At a minimum, and probably six to eight more.
Sure. And some of this can be, and I, I say sure, but I really mean that we have a, we partner with the city around a grant writer as well, and we haven't even tapped into that resource in terms of defraying some of the human capital costs. So all of these things are, are certainly something that we can continue to explore. But thank you for that suggestion. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Hohensee?
Thank you. I can see this is a lot of work, but I'm quite confused how we went from last meeting to this meeting. I don't understand why we needed a whole assistant superintendent of teaching and learning for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I don't understand why we need to hire a director, an executive director of social emotional learning for ninety thousand dollars, with or without a grant, because the grant won't last forever and there's benefits on top of it. We've got fourteen social workers in here, ten and a half health teachers. These are issues that we hadn't talked about as a board before, pulling teeth to get behavioral reports, because I, I know Mr. Kaufman and I have asked over and over again, we, we don't know what the behavior issues are in the school. So this looks like a very costly plan, mostly around social emotional learning, which we only did a pilot for in elementary school. I can't imagine if we're going to expand it to the other grades, how expensive that would be. I mean, you're, this, that you're asking for fifty-six new people over four years at a cost of nearly three million dollars, plus benefits to the city, it's another one point seven million. So you're talking about four point six, four point seven million, just to implement this plan. I'm very concerned about, do parents understand the shift from academics to behavioral assessment? I'm concerned about this task force. I don't understand why we're going to bring in people to develop the competencies. I mean, the wording of this was pretty amazing. I don't know what page that was on. But you're going to have unknown people, here it is, from a district, form a district-wide task force to examine and recommend developmentally and culturally appropriate norms for student behavior. Now, culturally appropriate, developmentally appropriate, that's huge. And then you add into there the students that are special needs or on the autistic spectrum, there is, I don't know how you're going to assess this information. And I don't, that task force is very concerning. Then you want to review current laws, update handbooks and policies, that's the board's job, and ensure consistent documentation, communication enforcement across all schools. The task force will be informed of the BOE policy committee, will inform our policy committee of its progress. That's just taking our authority and giving it away to another ad hoc committee, like we did with the strategic plan. And I, I don't think it's a great idea. I can't support it. Why do we elect board members if we don't work on the nuts and bolts of what's important to this district? The developmentally and culturally appropriate norms for behavior. Parents ought to weigh in on that.
Okay, so you brought up a lot of points, and I'm going to try to remember as many of them as I can. So if you look at the task force sheet, appendix four, so which, the, the idea behind the student behavior task force was to be responsive to students and parents, and to kind of come up with a, a way to work from grassroots to the board level. So the board obviously has the final say, but we're looking at our student handbooks, which are a little bit out of date, where it's, it's two thousand nineteen. We want to update to have, to address, you know, issues like online, social media, you know, all of those kinds of things that are not addressed in there. And we wanted to have input from parents and community groups and teachers and paras so that it would be kind of a community effort, instead of happening in the, in the, you know, just here, that we would have input from all of our constituents. I think that the whole idea of this was, you know, we went really out of our way to listen to all of the stakeholders, and we tried to infuse that responsiveness to our stakeholders in this plan. So instead of us coming up with, you know, norms of behavior, we want to, we know that we have a culturally diverse student body. We know that we have all different ages, so we, when we redo and look at our things, we want to make sure, are we paying attention to developmental issues, you know? And a kindergartner is different than a fifth grader, different than a middle schooler and a high schooler. We want to be sure that we're being culturally sensitive to our diverse population, and what better way than to ask those families to participate in this process? So I think that, you're right, the wording, it was, we spent a lot of time on that particular one, probably a full day, to come up with that, you know, how to word that, being sensitive to everybody, and to come up with something. We want to have, if we have behavior norms, we want to have buy-in from everybody, because it doesn't work if there isn't buy-in. And the best way to have buy-in is to include everybody in the conversation. So I think that was, am I explaining this all right? I think that that was the idea behind coming up with that, instead of just saying, you know, a group of people are going to come up with this. Like, I couldn't, I'm, I'm familiar with elementary school, but I could never do this for middle school or high school, even though I'm on the board and I've been a teacher. I would depend on those stakeholders to help me to come up with an appropriate set of norms so that when they're enforced, we're going to get better data, we're going to be able better to support students and to support all the adults and families who are working with them.
Would you entertain having a hearing with the public? Is this plan what they came to us to speak about? Because when I heard the feedback for the weeks and weeks prior to this, it did not lead me to form in my mind that this would be the outcome. So I see a disconnect between the input we got and the project. You may feel differently because you were in on it. Again, that's a problem by taking, you took it off the board, so we didn't get all the day-by-day input. But I think this is a leap of faith to think that this is what our parents want. And I would be interested at this point to-
So just so I understand, are you saying that you think that parents don't want to have a part in coming up with what the behavior expectations are that we have for them?
You're, you're talking about one little piece of it. I'm saying that I didn't know we needed an assistant superintendent of teaching and learning, an executive director of social emotional learning. All of these fifty-four new employees, the health teachers, the social workers, they come up to four point six million dollars. Do we want to shift that much of our resources to non-academic development? Is this what parents want? And then after we know that we really have buy-in, then maybe we discuss whether it's a task force or a subcommittee of the board. Because it is important, if you're saying these are going to be competencies that the kids are going to be assessed on to measure, what, what are these norms of, of development and, and cultural, whatever, their behaviors? You want to know what normal and developmentally correct behaviors are. Where are you going to find those? I mean, I don't want to delegate that away to a committee, but I don't even want to set up a committee until I know that we have buy-in from the public. Is this what our parents want?
I believe based on the focus groups and on the surveys that they do.
The parents-
Can I get in?
We spent-
Just a minute, Mr. Mosher, please.
Just to answer the question, the answer to your question is yes. Yes, the parents want this. Yes, the parents want direction. Yes, our parents want more face time with me, with Garth, with central office. That's what they said overwhelmingly. Yes, the parents want our teachers, our administrators, to understand cultural competency and not negotiate that. Yes, our parents want us to do a better job retaining and recruiting teachers. Yes, our parents want a conversation around social emotional learning and someone to bring it back. Yes, our faculty want the help and the support to implement social emotional learning and, and, and teaching with support. They don't want a new train and a new car, don't know how to drive it. We've answered all of those. We didn't come up with this just because we wanted to. We came up with this because we had focus groups. We had focus groups with parents, administrators, board members who showed up.
Yeah, we did.
We actually had those meetings with board members, and we explained this to those board members who showed up.
Yes, you did.
So we're, the answer to your question is that this district is in long overdue and in need of direction. And for us to, to, to say that it did not happen, it simply isn't true.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I don't always agree with things that Doris, Ms. Hohensee, you know, talks about. But I think that some of the things that we're looking at today in our strategic plan and, and some of the, the things that become available to, to study in the, in the appendices, we are in a situation now where we are developing a, a thing where we are being hit by the sins of our past. And I say the sins of our past as a, I think that when we look over the, the history of the, the board and, or everything that we're doing over the past, you know, twelve, thirteen years, and I'm looking at these things and I say, well, we have eliminated so much from the, the previous administrations that we are now at, floundering around and looking to try and, you know, project ourselves into the future with, with thoughts of, well, we need this, we need that, we need the other thing. But all of these things have been eliminated from the, the board from years ago. And we look at it now and we say, okay, I, I, I'm aware of the, the pressures that are put on the people at, in central office. I am aware of the, the pressures that are put on our teachers, who are some of the best, I think, in the country. And some of the, the other things that we have to go on, especially the numbers that we are dealing with and the, the, the new children that are coming in from, from away, the, the children that we have that are, are being afflicted by all kinds of autism and spectrum and whatnot that have affected them socially and emotionally. And now we're trying to be into a mode of catch-up, and we cannot do it very easily. And it's nice to have all of these words and flurry phrases and whatnot put into our, our plan. It's good to have the plan. But it's also good to take a look at the past and see where did we screw up in the past? And that is the, the thing that right now I am looking at, because as a senior member of the, of the board, I see all of the people that have been eliminated in the past. Well, we don't need this social worker, we don't need this, we, we had Middleton who was in Lud Street, and they eliminated that and they, because she retired, she had medical problems, and they never replaced her. And all of these people that have never been replaced over the years. And I, I go back a number of years over here because I've watched, even before I was elected to the board, I watched to see what the, what the dynamic was and what was happening. And over the years, I see how many things have been eliminated or changed or diminished in some way. And now we're trying to do catch-up. And, you know, it's, it's great to look at these appendices and, and look at the cost, the cost now is catching up to us. All of these positions that we used to have that are gone, they cannot be replaced. And now we're looking at, well, well, they just come out of college and they, you know, we, we get these young people that come in and that, all the experienced people that we had, they're gone. So yes, Doris, a lot of things you said tonight are, are true, and I, I think that you have a, a good mind in putting it together and the mathematics. I know you're a mathematician. And I agree with the, I agree with, some things I don't agree with because of, we disagree in philosophy. But what we are looking at now, and we, we're going to trash this out in these, in these meetings, and it's going to be difficult to replace what we once had. So we have to try and look at these things and say, yes, we have to take into consideration the, the effect on our kids, our special needs, our, every, everything else that goes along with it. And say, well, now we, now we, we need these people. We need these people, we need the psychologists. Well, we would have the psychologists, we didn't eliminate them years ago. We would have them now if we didn't have them split between doing double duty in this position and that position, part-time here, part-time there. We cannot continue the way we're going. We have to be very careful and look at the future very carefully so that we don't run into a, a worse problem than what we, what we have experienced.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mosher. And I see that we have Mr. Guarino and Ms. Van Twyver, but I would just want to reply one thing to Ms. Hohensee before we go. I don't want to have the impression here that we're turning away from academic growth because that's not true. So if we look at our vision, mission, and values, we're going to be a model for public education, for our student, staff, and community, as we have been in the past. That's academic. We're educating the whole child to empower student success. A whole child is taking into account the humanity that affects student learning and academics. So what we're doing is we're moving from looking at students as data points to looking them, at them as whole human beings and children. And I, you know, because all of those things affect student growth and academics, our value, we value a passion for learning. A passion for learning is more than test scores, it's a whole human being. And if you just look even at goal one, increase and monitor students' academic growth utilizing building-based and district-wide induction, instructional supports, that whole goal, every action step in there is, as a matter of, everything that we've put in here is to support students, to support teachers and families so that students can grow academically. So to say we're turning away from academics is absolutely incorrect. Just want to make sure for the public that they understand that. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Ms. Porter. I wanted to make a couple of points, and the first point I wanted to make is exactly what you said. I heard Ms. Hohensee say that this is a shift from academics, absolutely not a shift away from academics. And the other point I wanted to make was the connections with parents, as if parents are somehow on the outside looking in. First of all, you already made the point, I don't want to belabor that, that during this whole planning process, they were brought in, we saw parents, we met parents. And the second thing is goal number four, okay, it says increase the connections with the community. That means parents. Action step four, one, hold building-based teacher-parent-community forums twice a year. That is putting parents in the building twice a year. So I, I think, I think we just wanted to, to make sure that people understand that, that parents are not going to be on the outside looking in, that we have to understand- not going to be on the outside looking in, that we have to understand that there's a lot of changes that are happening in society and that affects our schools. Society is dynamic, it's changing. And the schools have to understand those demographics, we have to understand the customer, who's coming in our schools. And that speaks to the cultural part that's written in here. So, we have to know our customers, we have to know our constituencies, and we have to try to adapt to those changes and respond to meet the needs, to meet the needs of our students that are coming in. We can't meet the needs of the students, the customers, that are coming in our buildings unless we know them, unless we know what their needs are and unless we communicate to them and understand what they are. And I think that this plan goes to understanding that.
Thank you. Ms. Van Twyver?
Thank you, Ms. Porter. You're not going to like what I'm going to say, but I have to say it. Ever since I've been on this Board, I've thought that this district and every school district is trying to solve the problems of our society. I do not believe it is the responsibility of educators to have to deal with children who don't know how to behave, parent problem, children who have mental problems, psychologist or DCYF people. And if you want to accept those responsibilities as an educational district, then you're going to go broke. I'm telling you that because it's not going to get better. If we don't put pressure on parents to teach their children how to behave well, the state to provide services for those children who need psychiatric help, food banks that don't -- our parents that you say your kids come to school without food, so that we can't solve all these problems unless we had $10 trillion worth of money. And it's bothered me ever since. I don't think it's right to ask our teachers to have to deal with these problems, that we should have state agencies that take care of these things for us. And so, I will be around to see how this all comes out, but I can only see, just like technology, it's going to expand and expand and expand and cost the district too much. Now, I believe that a child should come to school with good behavior and feeling well and having a full stomach, but I do not believe it is the district's responsibility to do those things for it. So, that said, everybody probably just fell off their chairs at home, but I'm sorry, that's the way I feel about it. The other thing is, you talk about knowing, this is Appendix Eight, talking about knowing who is here in these focus groups. Data was provided for survey respondents by stakeholders, okay? Shows students, teachers, staff, how many, frequency, and what percentage, okay? But when it comes to the groups, the focus groups, we don't have that kind of data, all right? And I have requested it, but I'm told that the superintendent feels that it's not necessary. If you want me to believe what's going on here with the focus groups, then I would like to see how many teachers by school, how many parents by school, how many whatevers by school, so that I can have some sense of who is asking these things and who's responding to providing this information. And it doesn't seem like it could be hard. I mean, if you want me to, I'll do it. I'll spend the rest of my time here developing that information. But you provided it in one spot, but you didn't provide it in the other, and I think it needs to be there.
So, all of that information is on the website under the strategic plan. Every time we have...
But it's not, that information is not there. It was taken off by focus group. I looked at them, it's not there.
It was in packets. I believe that information was...
Our packets.
It was provided in packets. Every time there were a group of focus groups, we put that information in the Board packet.
It can't be consolidated into one per report? I mean, we have a data analyst that can do that, right?
So, just to be very clear, that is incorrect. I did not state that it was not appropriate for this Board to have this information. I just want to go back to what Ms. Porter said and is very accurate what happened. After every single focus group that we facilitated, we provided this Board with the names of the individuals, an attendance sheet, and so all of that information was already disseminated to the Board when we were going through this process. I also sent you an email and I CC'd the Board President as an example of a focus group that took place at the South and the names of the individuals that were there, along with the statements that were made. Part of what's important is that when we send this information out to the Board, we ask that you review it and bring it to the work sessions for clarification. But we did provide an attendance sheet along with statements that were made at these focus groups to make sure that the Board was kept abreast and transparent about what we did at these focus groups.
I am not asking for information by name, and I wish you would quit using that. We never ask for names on this Board. But that information needs to be consolidated into one data, one Excel sheet that shows the number of people that attended. And just like, why would you present it on the surveys, but you don't present it on the focus groups? I don't understand that.
I mean, I would guess that the reason is because on the focus groups, it was a physical, handwritten thing that then would have to be typed up versus in the survey, it was an electronic thing, so that UNH just gave us that.
How many groups are there?
Focus groups?
Yes.
Thirty-five?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six? Oh, that's close.
And so, at the focus groups, people wrote their comments on post-it notes, which were on the posters all around the room.
Fine.
And all of those comments, that's where we're talking about, we had 8,000 responses. Those were what were on the post-it notes that were transcribed and passed out in your packet.
And we covered that.
I'm not asking for that data. All I want to know is, you said there were 8,000 respondents? Eight thousand...
Responses.
Responses. And how many people made those responses? That's all I want to know. What's the big deal?
Okay. I will...
Have we lost Mr. Kaufman on the phone? Can we ask him? I think we might have lost him.
No, I'm still here. I was going to beep myself in. And I, Ms. Van Twyver, are you done?
What? I'm done. Oh, you bet I'm done.
Okay. So, Mr. Kaufman, can I...
Can I come in?
Yeah. Can I get to Mr. Guarino first and then I'll get to you?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Porter.
He's already had his to speak, didn't he?
Thank you, Ms. Porter.
He's already spoken, which you might...
I just wanted to say that I have seen parents, we have the data. The data was given to us, okay? So, the Board has listed, every time there was a focus group meeting, we got people's names and they all signed in, so we have all that information. I have seen the input from parents.
Point of order. There is one person who has the floor, there's side conversations going on. Could we please let the person who has the floor speak? Thank you.
I just want to make the quick point that we have all this data and we have this information. It was handed to us after every meeting. Everybody who was at those focus groups signed in. I went to two of those focus groups, one as a parent, one as a, and one time as a Board member, and I signed my name in. I signed my name, I think I signed in as a parent. I saw people's names and what they were, parent, teacher, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, we have that information.
So, it should be easy to compile.
By you.
I'll do it then.
Okay.
I'll do it.
You already have it.
Mr. Guarino, you're just missing the point altogether. We don't have a table like the one shown for the surveys, all right? It shows the number of students, the number of parents, the number of whatever.
Right.
So, Ms. Van Twyver, if I understand, you're asking for another appendix that's going to have that information on it.
Just include it...
But we are informed. We have that information.
Mr. Guarino, just, thank you. Ms. Van Twyver?
The public is not informed.
Ms. Van Twyver, can you please clarify for me what it is you're asking for on an appendix?
It's not additional appendix. It is the same, what appendix did I say it was?
You said Number Eight.
Number Eight. I can't find it right now. But where it shows... Let me sort of... Four, five, six, seven. I just want a spreadsheet that shows by school, the number of people that attended, the number of parents, the number of teachers, and number of any others, okay? That's all. Just like you have in that appendix for the surveys.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, we have somebody that can do that. We call it a data analyst and she should be able to do that. She worked on this project, didn't she?
She did.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Let me just, since we're talking about this, I attended the parent night for the middle school parents, and there were about 15 parents there from two of the three middle schools. Pennsyltwack was not represented that night. No parents were there from Pennsyltwack. So, I share some concerns of how deep the parental participation goes. And I do remember those information sheets on each one, but to Ms. Van Twyver's point, it's not aggregated anywhere, and I think that's what she's asking for.
Mr. Kaufman, can I...
If I can switch now to some of the comments that I have. Well, the first thing I want to comment on, Mr. Guarino touched on it actually a little bit, as did Ms. Porter, when they were alluding to demographics. There is no demographic data that I've seen in this that says what is the demographic, what are the demographic, what is the demographic distribution of our student population? And by extension, what is the demographics of Nashua? That data needs to be in this plan. It should be a decision, a basic data point that makes decisions. It seems like, oh, we're accommodating a changing demographic, but there's no data, discussion, or analysis of exactly what that demographic is. The same is true and is equally, if not even more important, that there's no enrollment data in this particular report. Without adequate, capable, and accurate, most importantly, enrollment data, anything and everything we do is a false premise. If you go by the enrollment data we received in the budget packet, that's based on the original planning commission, their analysis, and I can tell you that their previous years, which should be actual numbers, are not actual numbers. Now, you have to realize that enrollments in our district, 10 years ago, were 13,000 students. Now, we're just over 11. We're essentially flat over last year, even though we added 700 kids for kindergarten. So, we're very, very close to, we're still on a downward trend for a long period of time. So, the reason why we lost positions was we lost students. And there is a correlation, and that needs to be maintained. And that is not at all considered in the analysis, as best I can see it. I don't see any analysis. I don't see any discussion. I don't see the narrative. I'm sorry, Ms. Porter. But that's what I have to say about, you know, enrollments and demographic data. I'm still looking for the information on CTE that I mentioned at our last meeting. I'm not seeing anything about any comprehensive discussion about IT, its needs, what we have, what we should do, that's missing. Let's see. I would like to see, quite frankly, I think a strategic plan needs to, Mr. Mosher alluded to this a little bit. You need to look backward in a strategic plan as much as you move forward because you need to identify where you came from, how you got there, and what you need to do in the future. There's no discussions like that in here. And I think there's, for me, there's a real problem, and as much as I appreciate the hard work everybody did, there's too much reliance on resources who really don't have a lot of experience with the district budget and where the money comes from, where it's Like I said, I would like to see a discussion in the CTE, a broader discussion about the high schools, that one high school is really focused on the college-bound student and the other high school is focused on the trade and getting people career-ready. Of course, it would do the basic requirements for graduation, but the course mix would be different, and perhaps we wouldn't have to move kids between buildings as much. The cost of special education is not addressed as a key factor. I brought this up previously more than several times. We need, in my opinion, the strategic plan needs to address the ever-increasing cost of added district tuition. We've talked about a possible solution, which is to make Nashua a destination for other districts. It's not addressed in this plan. I don't know how you're going to pay the $3 million, what you're going to take away from if you want to add all this headcount in staff to the tune of $3 million plus the city's contribution on benefits of almost 1.7. Where is that money going to come from? It was suggested, you know, we have a teacher's contract coming up. Well, actually, all of them will be due in the next two to three years, or one to three years. So, that costs, and if that goes up, I think Dr. Mosley said $8 million or something, you're going to tack on to that another three for the new position. There needs to be, we have to self-fund some of the growth you want. In my opinion, you can do that with special ed, but it's not in the plan. Until it's in the plan, we don't have a plan. I can appreciate what you were saying, we're not dropping our focus on academics. It feels that way, okay? That's a perception. There's an overwhelming discussion of SEL. I'm concerned about the Tier Two, Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three students. I wish we had a goal that said we are going to get rid of the backlog in terms of the knowledge these students have. We're going to bring them up to grade level, whatever that is, and we're going to, that's what I would like to see an investment strategically and very importantly made. If it's there, I don't see it. I'd like to see it described. I mentioned the demographic data. I would recommend that we have, once this plan is agreed to or finalized with more information, I think it still lacks information. I believe we should have a public session and encourage public participation on what is being proposed. The other thing I wanted to say, just looking at my list. Yeah, there's no departmental statutory performance or assessment. I think, like I said, plans like this need to look backward as much as they look forward. And I think there should be, for each major department, if we have a director, we have a department. And for each of those positions, there should be some kind of statement, an assessment of this is where we are, this is what we accomplished, this is what our goals are, this is how much money we spend. That, we have, you know, we have no view into the way departments operate. And strategically, without that knowledge, it's very hard to plan. So, I guess I'll stop there, but I'll tell you right now, without this additional information, and maybe, Ms. Porter, you can address the narrative. I see a two-page, is it what, three pages of narrative? If I can find that page here. The first page is the list, oh, sorry, the appendices. You have a cover sheet, you have half a page that starts with June 19, 2019. The next page lists the five goals and has a conclusion. If that's the narrative, well, somebody really needs to complete it because this in no way introduces things, lays out the field, gives us an introduction to the data and how you use it to come to your conclusion. And I'm finding the report still grossly deficient, and I don't know what your timeline is on this, but I'm going to say this. I don't think the current Board, and if I need to make a motion in a future time, I will, I don't think this current Board should take any action of approval. We can work on it, but I don't think we should approve any of this. And I would suggest that it get handed off to the next Board, which will have a new majority of elected people, whoever they may turn out to be. Because the commitments in here for staffing are ginormous, if that really is a word, I'm not sure. But I look at the Union Capital cost sheet of Appendix Three, where we're hiring all this and it summarizes to 2.9 million, almost $3 million at the bottom. There's references here for ELL teachers being hired into, from 2021 to 2026. This plan, the title page, the top of the page is, it's a plan from 2019 to 2024. Yet there are one, two, three, four, five, six items on this single-sided sheet that are beyond 2024. 2026, 2026, 2025, 2020, 2031, 2024, so five of them. And how is that in a plan that ends in 2024? So, I have, I still have concerns. I hope, Ms. Porter, they get addressed in a future version of this. And one last thing is, the next time you put this document out, could you please use change bars? Very difficult to know what changed from version to version, and it would be very helpful... And it would be very helpful for us who are in the process of trying to understand what's in here and ultimately have to agree and approve to it that we, we, we actually know what's new and what's not new. And I'll say one last thing, and then I'll give you back the floor, Ms. Porter, is, um, uh, that's, the, um, I, all right, I'll, it was a good one, but, um...
Oh, can I come back to you?
Let it go, yeah. If I remember, I'll let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, before I get to, we have a few people who want to go. I just want to bring everyone's attention to, um, action step five point two. Design a proposal that addresses special education, out-of-district costs, and other endeavors. So it is in there. I also wanted to say, um, I know that at the focus group, there were not a lot of Pennachuck students, uh, parents, exac, excuse me, at the, um, focus group that, uh, Mr. Kaufman attended, which is why we scheduled another one. And I did a, a focus group just for Pennachuck parents at Pennachuck, trying to remember of all of the things that you said. Um, and I'm falling behind.
Can I also piggyback on what you said?
Yep.
So, and just keeping in concert with your reaction back to Mr. Kaufman. Mr. Kaufman mentioned CTE and technology, um, last session. If you look at 1.4, the CTE language in there. 1.7, there's technology language there. 2.6, the CTE, um, language there. 5.2, there's the, um, out-of-district concern. So all of the concerns that were expressed at the last work session that Mr. Kaufman shared is in this plan that we just presented to the board. So I, I hope that Mr. Kaufman takes some time to, to look at that and, 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 and understand that we were sensitive and responsive to his feedback.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Raymond has been very patiently waiting. Ms. Raymond?
Um, thank you very much. Uh, I had a couple notes here. Um, regarding, um, staffing levels, um, just to finish the response to Mr. Kaufman, um, the staffing levels weren't reduced because of reduced enrollment. We lost fifty-six positions, um, about eight years ago due to a $4 million budget shortfall.
Yes.
And so there was, there was a significant staff reduction. And then we never built it back up again.
Yes.
So that was irrespective of enrollment. Um, the other note that I would like to say about staffing is that, um, and demographics too. I happen to agree with Mr. Kaufman that it would be interesting to see if we have, um, if we're mentioning changing demographics, if we have some, you know, information to back that up.
Sure.
Um, but information that we do have from other board meetings is that almost 20% of our students now qualify for, uh, as English-language learners. And almost 20% of our students have an IEP or 504. Um, and those are changing demographics. Ten years ago, it wasn't 20% of our students who were English-language learners. Um, and I personally can't imagine trying to learn algebra if I don't know English or heaven forbid, Macbeth if I don't know English. So, you know, I, I imagine that students with, um, an extra level of need require an extra level of staff support. And so I don't know that enrollment and staffing is a one-to-one ratio. I think you have to consider some of those demographic shifts. Um, going back to my comments, um, I had a couple of questions on the task force on appendix four. Um, we have, on the first, um, leadership team, we have a list of participants. But there isn't a proposed list of participants for any of the task forces, task forces, got that word out. Um, so I'm curious if, um, when we had our discussion earlier, uh, and I don't remember who was talking about task forces earlier, um, you had responded that parents would be involved in these. Um, so I don't know if it would be helpful to have a list like that of, you know, administration, teachers, parents, whatever. Um, and I would also be curious, like, do you want board involvement in these task forces? Or do you want them to be, um, because some of them, it sounded like, would be, um, reporting to a specific committee?
Yes.
Um, and so, you know, that's something. The other question that I had was, um, regarding the plan as a whole. Should we hypothetically, um, move forward and approve this and not wait for a new entire board to do that? Um, since half of us are not going anywhere. Um, would we then approve all of the, would that be tacit approval for all of the positions that are proposed in the plan? So, um, as others have stated, there's some, um, higher-level management positions proposed here. I don't know if I personally agree with every single one of those, but I tend to agree with the, the gist of the plan as the whole. So if we, as a board, said, yes, we approve of this strategic plan, are we approving up each one of those individual positions? And do we lose then the ability to have those discussions come budget season?
No, you don't lose that ability to, to have those discussions. And this is a proposal. Uh, there will be some positions, and we don't know, we don't know what's going to, what our budget's going to look like in three years. We just don't know that.
Right.
And some of these positions, my hope is that we can fund all of them. I really, I would love to have that. But the reality may be, we may get half and maybe have to make some adjustments. And that's where the organic piece comes, uh, comes into play. Um, if I could just, I, I think, I, I agree with Mr. Mosher on what he said about the positions, that yes, like, it's kind of deja vu where a lot of these positions were eliminated. There was, if you, there were these positions. And now what's the reality is that we have teachers and faculties, or good ones, who are now wearing multiple hats. And here's, you do nothing? Here's our reality. And if I can just use this as an example. We lost some very talented assistant principals this past two years. We lost them because they're doing two things here. They lost them because they're actually leaving our district, making more money, and having one job. Our current assistant principal, how, how their job description lay out for this past year was that they were assistant principals and coordinators. And what that does for some of our schools, like Mount Pleasant, some of our schools, like Birch Hill, some of our schools, like Dr. Chris, it leaves a half-time assistant principal, which puts more strain on the principal. And so the person working half-time isn't there all the time. The principal is kind of managing the school half the, ha, half the week. And so these positions, and I just use it as an example. I said it publicly, I said, like, what's happening now is that we have become the district that, that puts all of that human capital, the resources into all of our talented stu, our, our faculty. And then some school district comes along and, and simply just scoops them up and takes all of the time and energy we put into our, our talented faculty. That's just at the administrative level. That's also happening at the teacher level as well. And what this plan is saying to the teachers and to the board is that we have to start listening to what the teachers are saying to us. They want this level of support. They need that level of support. They too want to stop the, the, the evolving door of teachers and administrators leaving. You're right, um, and I agree with Mr. Mosher that it's been, we, we have had this, this dearth of teachers and administrators leaving our district. And all we've said essentially is, the people who are left over, just do a little bit more. You, you take on, Bob Chopar, instead of now, Bob, you're the ELL coordinator, and now you're the ELL coordinator, the out-of-district coordinator, and now you're the, uh, district student support person. So what we're asking and what this plan is really saying is that we're starting to create better working conditions to retain and retract, uh, our most talented teachers. I also recognize that this is a plan. It doesn't mean that it's set in stone or nothing. But certainly, when we talk about these positions, be happy to give a job description. Be happy to tell you the distinction between what, what's being proposed for this assistant superintendent, and Garth, and Donna. I will say this, and I, I think it came out through our focus groups time and time again. I, I was, we were there on Saturday morning. We, they love, our teachers, faculty, parents want more face time with central office, uh, me, principals. And that came across, they just, they don't want an email. They don't want to be a text message. They actually want those interactions. And that's why you see those, those, uh, parent focus groups. So certainly, the, the plan is, is organic. We'll always revisit positions as we did. The board's not losing any autonomy or authority when it comes to approving the budget and even position proposal. So I, I think this is a nice, uh, way to continue that discussion but also be responsive to our faculty and to our stakeholders.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you. Um, I like to say that, uh, Dr. Mosley says that it's organic. I like to say it's a vision. That's what planning is about. It's about a vision. Anything beyond the budget that's already been approved is a plan for the future. So those positions are not set in stone, obviously not. The board has to approve any, any changes in personnel. But that's a plan for a vision so we can at least look to the future as to what is going to be coming down the pipe and the pipe, in the next, um, in the next, uh, budget, budget seasons. Okay? And that's what a plan is about. It's about vision. Um, the other thing I wanted to say is I actually agree with Mr. Kaufman on the part where he said that, uh, we should have a narrative or at least a section, doesn't have to be huge, on who we are, on existing conditions, demographics, also physi, an inventory of physical plant, buildings, et cetera, uh, as well as, um, who our, who our students are and, 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 uh, and what we, what we have physically and, and demographically already, the existing conditions. And also, I, I disagree with Mr. Kaufman putting this off into next year. I don't think that one person on this board can put off what the majority might agree upon. You know, we, we're going to be deliberating on this. And if all of us agree upon it, we may or may not. I'm not saying that we're going to approve this today or tonight. But if we're going to agree upon this before the end of the year, one person on this board does not get to tell the other people on the board what to do. I find it politically distastefully to say, oh, I'm, I'll make a action to put it off to next year. That's, that's just wrong. It's disrespectful to the rest of the board.
Okay. So can I just come back to, the, the purpose of a plan, a strategic plan, is so that everything, all the actions you take are strategic. We're a big district, and we need to all be on the same page, going in the same direction. And that's, you know, that's a, an enormous undertaking. And I think that this has just been a comprehensive effort. Is it going to be perfect? No. Are we all going to work on it together? I certainly hope so. But this, this gets us in the direction, going in a place so that, you know, all of the decisions we make, we need to measure against the standard of our vision, of our mission, of our values. Um, and when it comes to, um, budget years, I mean, there, we, we get huge budget proposals. This should help us to kind of sort out, what are the things that are going to help us to arrive at our destination? So they're just, you know, as they're listed on here, they're proposed. And it's, you know, it, it's an ambitious proposal. It is. But isn't that what we, isn't that what our kids deserve? An ambitious proposal? I, I think they do. Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. Could you add to that list of things that we would request to have? If we lost fifty-something, uh, staff members eight years ago when we had the $4 million budget cut, could we have what positions they were? To see how they correlate with what positions we're adding and what the enrollment was there and what the enrollment. You know, these are types of statistics that would be useful not only for our board but for the aldermen. If we're going to go and propose some of these additions, they're going to want to see that perspective. Because I think the perspective was well-presented when we did the union contracts. We got the history. We saw three dimensionally where we were, where we're going, and where we want to be. I think, uh, Mr. Kaufman was right. To get the history, it's a more compelling argument. Because I don't know that we, we lost fourteen social workers. We may have lost subject teachers. We may, I just want to see how it breaks out so we can understand what the change is.
Okay, thank you. And we do appreciate those, um, that type of input. Um, I think I, um, began by saying that these were, um, they're drafts. And, um, we appreciate the input to help to improve them and make them better. So thank you.
Thank you. I've had my hand up several times, and you just overlook me for this. Okay. Um, thank you for the Nashua School Strategic Plan. You guys did a lot of work on this. It took a couple of years to do it. Um, you had experts doing this. We had a chance to feel in during that time that you guys were doing, doing the, the, um, plan. And the stakeholders is doing a great job as well. However, if I was to approve this right now, I would. I don't think we should have wait until 2020 to do this. Um, we can vote on it and we can move forward. Because if we listen to our peers here on the board, we'll never get this done. Um, I remember, recall this in, um, in the past that one of the things is that your, your plan is going to fail. But it's not failing. It's a good plan. And I respect that you guys worked diligently on this for the last two years. And it's a really good vision, and the goals are really good. And we should look at the whole child because that's what we deal with every single day. So I think we should vote on this. And I don't think we should be waiting until you do because you're never going to, you're never going to, please, everybody, you're never going to have enough. It's always going to be something wrong. So I believe that you should go ahead, move forward with this strategic plan. And then, if we want to update it later, we can. But you will never get this passed if we listen to other board members because that's what they want you to do, not to pass the strategic plan. And I think that's a bungee got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, and I think that our purpose in mentioning, I know, we can, I think I speak for all of us, the purpose in mentioning how much time has gone into it is not so that people thank us or say, oh, you did some. The purpose is to say that this wasn't just thrown together. This has been discussed with lots of different people, looked at by many different eyes. So I think our purpose in saying that is so that you know that this wasn't just the work of an afternoon. Um, I, we've tried to be responsive to input. We've tried to, um, be comprehensive and to, uh, set a direction for our district that's going to benefit our students because that's why we're here.
We need to.
And I, I, going back to Ms. Hohensie's, um, comment, it's, it's true. We need to, a part of what we've had in our mind when we're doing this is to explain it in a way that will be, um, evident to the aldermen so that when we go and ask for something, we can say, we're asking for this particular thing because it fits into our plan in this particular way. It helps us achieve this particular goal. And, you know, I think that though, that level of specificity can only help. And, because, you know, we're, um, the health of our city depends on the health of our schools. And our Board of Aldermen and Board of Ed work together beautifully. I, I think they do. And I think that we've been mindful of doing this in a way that will be understandable to them so that they can support our students.
My point is, you'll never get this passed trying to implement everything that's already implemented in this plan. If they read it, it's already there. Uh, Mr. Kaufman says several, several things that was already in the plan. So I want the public to know, this was not done half-assed. It just wasn't.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Porter, may I make my comment, please?
I'm, I'm sorry?
May I make my comment, please?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So I do want to point out to board members that the previous board, you know, my first two years, that board, the previous media, previous board deferred action in knowing that a new majority or, in fact, a minority was going to be elected. So the history of the board is, the board has, a board that I was on, deferred action be, to allow for the new elected people. The other thing is, five new people are coming on board. Okay? So it's not just four of you will be here, but five of us may or may, it's going to be a new group of five, which constitutes a majority. So I just want to point out that historically, this board, most recent one, in fact, has deferred action based upon a forthcoming election. So thank you all. Uh, move to adjourn?
Second.
On the motion, uh, to adjourn, Ms. Oden?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Ms. Porter.
Is there more, Ms. Porter, that you wanted to address? Have you finished your presentation?
Well, I, I think so. I'm just, I, you know, I've, it's, um, I, I just wanted people to give input today about the meat of it. Is there anything specifically, you know, um, as I said, we'll go over the, uh, the editing. That's the last thing that you do as a writer. Um, and I hope that people can see that there's really a sincere effort here to do the best for our students and for our school. Nothing is perfect. It's not cast in stone. But as I said, it's going to give us a direction. And, you know, we can be all rowing the same boat in the same direction. So I think that, I hope that that's what we've accomplished here. Okay, thank you.
Would you like me to take the role?
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh, on the motion to adjourn, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. We are adjourned at eight fourteen PM. Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Have a good night.